One, executive session, portion of the meeting. Is there a motion to go in executive session for student matters, certified personnel and contractual matters?
So moved.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson, who have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Howell. Any discussion? All those favors say aye.
Aye.
We'll now go into executive session. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Certainly.
Got a motion by Mr. Rebels, second by Ms. Johnson. All those favors say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. We are now out of executive session. There was no action taken during executive session. We'll resume the general session of the meeting at six thirty. Thank you. Do I have a motion to come out of executive session?
Call this meeting in order for the general session of York School District One, Board of Trustees. If I could invite Pastor Brad Hanke from Liberty Church Clover Campus up for our implication, please.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today, Lord, and we're just so thankful for everything you've done, Lord. We're thankful for how good you are to us, Lord. We're thankful for how much you love us. God, tonight, I want to just thank you for every member of this board, Lord, and what they do for us, God. We pray that you will just bless them, Lord, and honor them. God, I want to thank you tonight for all of our educators, Lord, and how much they mean to us and how much they mean to our kids, Lord. God, I pray that you'll just bless them, Lord. I pray that you'll bless the night tonight, Lord, the meeting that we're having tonight. God, I pray that you'll just help them, help us as we, as we plan and prepare for the future, God. We ask you all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to invite Emmanuel Johnson up front, sixth grade York Intermediate School, for the pledge of allegiance. Can you please stand?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to welcome everybody? I know this is a little out of dates for us as the last meeting was canceled due to weather. So appreciate everybody being here this evening. One direction reflect that we do have a quorum with Mr. Anderson absent, everyone else present. We do have confirmation of notice to media. Are there any members of the media here present tonight? None members of the media appear to be present. We do not have anyone that signed up to speak tonight, so that being stated, we'll move forward to the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval of the consent agenda? Motion to approve as presented by Ms. Howell, seconded by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose, no. Motion carries. We'll now move into our recognitions. Mr. Keith McSwain, York Intermediate School, for a school spotlight.
Good evening, school board members. Chairman Childers, Superintendent Cox. First of all, I want to say Happy School Board Appreciation Month to all of you. I appreciate everything you do for us and just want to say thank you. So I come here on behalf of York Intermediate School and I have with me Ms. Lisa Beck, our literacy coach, and Ms. Kay Falls, our media specialist. And tonight, we bring you to spotlight from York Intermediate School, Learning Through Literacy Lab. We started that, so at York Intermediate, our students go to the library, they're assigned to go to the library, one day a week with their language arts teacher. And that's the time that they go to the library, they, the students meet with their teachers, teacher, and of course, Ms. Falls was there, and we've always done it that way in the past. And it's usually about twenty minutes is what students get with their teacher in the media center. And then, so this year, we decided to add to that. So students still go to the library one day a week with the language arts teacher, and then they move right in after they are there for about twenty minutes, they move right into the literacy lab with Ms. Beck. And Ms. Beck meets with these students weekly, so all the teachers get to bring their language arts class one day a week. Teachers get to watch Ms. Beck teach a lesson, and our students, of course, are engaged in those lessons. And then they also can go back to the classroom and kind of finish up what was taught that day in literacy lab. So that's something new we've started this year, and everything's going well. And we really wanted to make sure that our teachers got, would watch Ms. Beck and get some of that coaching, some of that job embedded professional development. And we also wanted to touch on specific standards that we felt like our students needed. So that's what we're doing this year with Learning Through Literacy Lab, and at this time, we can watch the video.
My name is Keith McSwain, principal of York Intermediate School. One of our district strategic changes believes is that learning is an ever-changing process for students and staff. This year, we started a new program called Literacy Lab. And our goals for this program are twofold. One is to provide job embedded professional development for our teachers on a weekly basis to show improvement in reading and literacy skills. And two is to provide weekly lessons for our students that provide rigorous and relevant standards for our students to work on.
I had an idea in my mind about creating this literacy learning lab because I felt there might be a need that I might could fill. First of all, I'm very passionate about reading and writing, and so I want to share that with not only teachers but students. And so I felt like it would be an opportunity where students could, students and teachers alike could come and spend some time in here where we can focus on specific targeted skills, but mostly literacy, reading and writing too as well.
When we came into the school year and they said something like, so on the days that you're going to the media center, you're also going to be going to the literacy lab with Ms. Beck, and she's going to be doing about a thirty minute session with the students. And then she would get to see all of the students in the building. So when we started that, it was very upfront in regards to, hey, these are the goals that we're going to utilize. We're going to teach the students how to create SMART goals. We're going to really set expectations that this is a learning environment.
So I partner with classroom teachers, it's basically job embedded professional development because they do come here and they stay, and so they're able to watch the lesson. They can observe their students, see how they're reacting and their engagement. I provide reflective tools for them to use depending on what, whatever it is I'm teaching, so that they can hopefully even take some of it back into their own instructional practices is my ultimate goal.
And it gives me a chance to kind of just sit back and watch my students as learners. So she's coaching me by teaching my students, and every single time you leave thinking, okay, that's, that's a little stowaway for me, and, or I have a reflection to complete based on the lesson, and I give it back to Ms. Beck.
We, we want to see students be more efficient, more effective in reading and also their literacy ability. We want students to be good writers. We want students to be able to be better at comprehending when they read. So those are some things that we want students to be able to get right away this school year and moving into their next grade level.
My goal has always been to teach students to enjoy reading. The most effective strategy that I use is my book talks. And I have students comment on book talks years after they've left us. I may see one in the grocery store, and they'll tell me, oh, I used to love your book talks. The key, I believe, is reading what you enjoy. And so I focus heavily here with students on finding what genre that they enjoy most, and I try and push them in that direction. We have seen roughly sixty to sixty-five percent of our students participate in the program. You know, last year, we had a little over four hundred students that participated, and I think that is a strong statement for our reading success here.
This year, she doesn't have to travel to all of the classrooms. It is just a much better use of time. We go to the literacy lab, and it's like a surprise, Ms. Falls is doing the book talk today. So the students are getting to see those book talks. She's able to incorporate technology into it now. So there might be book trailers, she talks about the websites for the authors, allowing students to really kind of get that aspect of it's not just one book. If an author has one book and it's not a reading, it must be a teaching, it has other books.
And that, you know, one student says, my reading is up to the next level, which is, that just makes my heart happy. Teaching, I can see wheels turning in students. And so even though there might not be something tangible that I have as evidence per se, I do feel like for students, you know, I'm helping to increase their stamina, rigor, critical thinking skills and things like that, so trying to find the pattern for the students as to what they are liking and what they are interested in, and how they can take it to the next level.
So we bring you that information about our literacy lab, and I'm just pleased and glad to have with me Ms. Beck and Ms. Falls. I thank them for, them coming tonight. And, you know, they, they put this together. I'm there to support them, and it's going well. So we wanted to bring you that, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
If I have any questions? I haven't visited this year, but last year I visited, and some of their loans run in pretty good order, so. But we know how important literacy is, so for Ms. Beck, Ms. Falls, and Keith McSwain, we do greatly appreciate you presenting. Appreciate all you do.
Very much.
And if any of you would like to get involved in our reading program.
I caution you, miss a deadline.
This is the reading table right here. They can help you, and if not, y'all contact.
We greatly appreciate you saying that, for sure. Thank you. We will now continue with recognitions. Ms. Howell will assist with the recognitions. And Ms. Spiner.
I'd like to ask Dr. John Tharp to come forward, please, and Ms. Lizzie Elliott, if she's here with us. Thank you. York Comprehensive High School students traveled to Columbia to audition for the South Carolina All-State Chorus. There were one thousand six hundred seventy-two students that auditioned for only five hundred nineteen spots. The overall acceptance rate for the state was around thirty-one percent. York Comprehensive High School had nineteen of twenty-seven students accepted, which was a seventy percent acceptance rate. In addition, there were six students ranked in the top ten for the state in their voice part. Please congratulate the following students. Ariana Brial. Megan Brewer. Audrey Bronson, who was number eight, soprano one. Audrey Buren, who was number six, soprana two, soprana two. Kaylee Fowler. Ricky Govia Mendoza. Lindsay Heath. Gracie Henson. Savannah Honeycutt, who was number eight, soprano one. Molly Lindell. Micah Mobley. Cameron Neal. Gabby Rivera. Ian Roder, who was number eight, bass. He's wrestling. Silas Schumacher. Harmony Strickland, who was number four alto. We'll wait. Emily Thielbar. Harper Wade. And JD Waxman, who was number seven bass. Let's give them all a round of applause. Congrats. Audrey, if y'all could stand, the two Audrey's, if y'all could stand. Audrey and Audrey, we're going to get you to come back up, please. You stand back up, please. The Southern Region American Choir Directors Association hosts an honors choir event every two years. Students from across eleven states submit recorded auditions that are judged by a panel. This year, almost two thousand students submitted recordings. This is the first year that York Comprehensive High School has ever participated in this event, and we have two students selected to represent our district and our state. These students will travel to Kentucky over our February intercession to work with nationally renowned clinicians, and will present a core, a concert at the end at the Southern Region Conference. Congratulations to Audrey Bronson and Audrey Buren. Okay, we will do another picture. You guys will, y'all get front and center. Congratulations. I'd like to invite Mr. Keith McSwain, York Intermediate Principal, back up. As part of York Electric's Bright Ideas Grant Program, grants are awarded to selected teachers across their service territory. In September, peers submitted nomination forms describing why the teacher they nominated should receive a wish list fulfillment grant, either for a hundred dollars or for five hundred dollars. Congratulations to the following who were chosen. Beth Bridges. Brandy Willis. And Tierney Norris. Congratulations, ladies.
I didn't write it. Fear its nominated us. So we didn't write, so Fear it submitted these nominations to York Electric, and then we were chosen from there.
Which I think screams volumes. Thanks again. I'd like to invite Dr. Latoya Dixon, Assistant Superintendent, to come forward. In light of York School District One's recent nomination as a finalist for the National District of Distinction Award in the Academic Acceleration category, it is with great pride and enthusiasm that we recognize the instrumental role played by Alyssa Cox, Director of Secondary Education, in this prestigious achievement. The nomination underscores York School District's one unwavering commitment to advancing educational innovation through student-centered learning experiences. Alyssa Cox's leadership in supporting the district's student-centered learning and competency-based education has been instrumental. Under her guidance, the district has emerged as a trailblazer in the realm of forward-thinking learning experiences. Her collaboration with Redesign, the competency-based education partner, has been pivotal and showcased. has been pivotal in showcasing the district's dedication to student-centered learning, resulting in improved academic outcomes and a redesign of professional development experiences. As the Director of Secondary Programs, Ms. Cox's leadership has been key to the district's recognition as one of only two in the state approved by the State Board of Education for implementing innovative and student-centered learning strategies. This recognition highlights Alyssa Cox's outstanding work and leadership to make goals of the strategic change agenda actionable through her support of the work of administrators, teachers, and students. Alyssa Cox's contributions exemplify the district's core values, placing students at the heart of all educational initiatives. The recognition is a powerful testament to her dedication, as well as the collective efforts of educators, students, and the entire York School District One community. Congratulations, Ms. Cox. So we would like to invite Betty Johnson and Chris Revels to come forward. Tonight, we congratulate two of our board members, Betty Johnson and Chris Revels, on achieving 20, that's two zero, years of school board service to York School District One. 20 years of service is quite admirable. Thank you. 20.
One more. Good evening. I want to say thank you for, and appreciation for all of you for Board Appreciation Month. I do too. Want to thank you for all your work. I'm gonna recognize in just a few minutes another award that we have started this year. This one's called the Multiplier Award. And just to give you a little bit of information about it, our multiplier award offers, multipliers offer the absolute best of their thinking and creative ideas. They give more than their job requires, volunteer their extraordinary effort and energy and resourcefulness. They find personal satisfaction in coming to the aid of the organization. Multipliers see a need and work to fill the need without concern regarding their position or title. They actively search for more valuable ways to contribute and hold themselves to the highest standards. Multipliers are genius makers. They amplify the intelligence and others by recognizing the unique talents of each individual and providing opportunities for others to share their talents. Multipliers build collective intelligence and capacity at every level of the organization. Multipliers offer thoughtful input focused on solutions rather than simply naming problems. So our, all our executive staff, principals, schools, everyone could recommend someone for a multiplier award. And we have tonight four or three individuals that are winning this award for this month. We will hope to have some more next month. I already have one recommendation that's sitting there waiting. And since we were a little bit delayed, we're gonna have it at the February meeting. But our winners for tonight, our first one is Daphne McNeely. Daphne's supervisor stated, "Daphne McNeely is a true example of a multiplier. She always gives more than is expected, often working on her own time to make departments successful. She serves the district officially as the routing coordinator, but she does so much more. She challenges me to be better at my work and does the little things, such as writing handwritten notes of thanks and encouragement to not only transportation employees, but all other employees in the district. Daphne has a servant's heart and often reminds us that our work is a mission field where we can make a difference each day in our students' lives. It is an honor and blessing to have Daphne McNeely as my right hand. Without her work ethic, positive attitude, and willingness to go above and beyond, her job description, the transportation department could not have been, could not be such a success. Her love for YSD One is evident and contagious. We are very fortunate to have her on the team as a multiplier." Congratulations, Daphne. Our next multiplier is Andrina Figueroa. Ms. Hoyt stated, "Andrina exemplifies the characteristics of a multiplier. While her title is school counselor, she thoughtfully and intentionally reaches far beyond her role each and every day at Cotton Belt, and I can testify to that without a doubt. Ms. Figueroa is here for the students to bring out the best in them, to nurture confidence and believe in themselves, and to encourage them and to do whatever it takes to ensure they feel safe and loved while here with us. She is calm voice, a strong advocate, and a valued thought partner. Without fail, she leverages resources and community connections to proactively support and provide assistance to our families. In addition, she actively seeks solutions, thinks creatively, and goes above and beyond to help whenever she sees a need. She is so special to our students, staff, and families for so many reasons, but most importantly, because she loves us so well and gives her very best every day without ever expecting anything in return. Ms. Fig is truly a bright and positive light in our building. And although she is humble and never seeks credit, I would love to honor her for being an incredible difference maker and a multiplier." Our next recipient is Ms. Tina Davis. Tina's principal stated, "It is such, it is with great pleasure that I submit this recommendation for a multiplier award highlighting Ms. Tina Davis, Administrative Secretary. She is our first impression, our Siri and our front office cheerleader to all who walk through the doors. Ms. Davis has dedicated her service to Hickory Grove Sharon Elementary in York School District One for over 16 years. She is an autonomy of a servant leader. Ms. Davis is dedicated to serving and leading her peers, colleagues, students, and families. She is always up for the challenge in taking care of school operations, answering phones, operating the office workflow, and giving solid directions and advice to all who walk through the doors. She assists our teachers, staff, and children with love and care daily. Ms. Davis is an extraordinary gift in collaborating, serving, and caring for her community. She will often find Ms. Davis supporting her colleagues and students after school hours at games, concerts, church, and other venues. She cares greatly about everyone that walks through across her path. Ms. Davis leads Hickory Grove Sharon Fundraising Committee in order to gift back to our community. We have served numerous groups like veterans, nursing homes, families, and the list goes on. Mrs. Davis is also a lead volunteer at Operation Christmas Child, where within our community, recently, she had collected as a site collection over 2,100 shoe boxes to be shipped all over the world. Her contributions to our school family are immeasurable. She is an outstanding member to our school, community, and district. Mrs. Tina Davis is very deserving of the multiplier award." Thank you.
Guests, board members, annually during the month of January, we celebrate School Board Appreciation Month. And as such, it is my pleasure to once again honor our York School District One Board of Trustees. In celebration of the South Carolina School Board Recognition Month themed "In It to Win It", we recognize the invaluable contributions that each of you make. Your commitment to the betterment of our community's education system is commendable. This year's theme serves as a powerful reminder of the responsibility that each of you bear in advocating for those that you represent. Your unwavering dedication, especially during challenging times, is not only acknowledged but appreciated. As the elected representatives of York One community, you embody the voice and vision of our community. Please know that your efforts do not go unnoticed by our parents, our teachers, our faculty, staff, and administrators. We recognize the work that you have already done and encourage you to continue fighting on behalf of our educational community. Your tireless commitment to enhancing the quality of education for our students is inspiring, and we want to take this opportunity to thank you for your service. Your collective actions prove you are in it to win it. Thank you for being the driving force behind the positive change here in York School District One and for supporting our faculty, our staff members, and administrators as we continue our journey as a learning organization. It is my privilege and honor to serve with a school board that is committed to learning, serving, and giving alongside our York School District One team members. Once again, we are excited to host you for school visits this year. The school visits for this year will be as follows. Chairman Scott Childers will be visiting Harold C. Johnson and Jefferson Elementary. Chris Revels will be visiting York Comprehensive High School and Floyd D. Technology Center. Beth Faulkner will be visiting Hunter Street Elementary. Diane Howell will be visiting York Intermediate. Betty Johnson will be visiting Cotton Belt Elementary. David McSwain will be visiting Hickory Grove Elementary. And Wade Anderson will be visiting York Middle School. Additionally, there is a small token of our appreciation at each of your seats. It includes an embroidered hand towel and Southern Suds decorative soaps that were packaged by our Cougar Den Special Needs Students at York Comprehensive High School. Board members, as they are guests, as board members arrived this evening, they each individually signed the South Carolina School Board 2024 Ethics poster as a symbol of their renewed commitment to the ethical, effective, and efficient service of our district. At this time, I'm gonna ask them to come forward with that poster so we can get a photograph. Let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Very appreciated. Didn't want to just miss the opportunity on the recognitions as well. I know a lot of folks have left, but we've got stuff here, we've got it nationally, I mean, across the board. And I think that says a lot for our district. And I know y'all probably think I'm a broken record, but we know it's not the work you do today, it's the work you do every day to get there. So it's a lot of practicing for the students, a lot of work for the teachers and staff. So we know what it takes and we do greatly appreciate you as a board. We'll now move to, oh, I'm not gonna forget this. I said I wasn't, now I'm not going to. I would also like to note that the Sacramento School Board Association had Chris Revels as one of their spotlight items on the Sacramento School Board Association. So I thought it was fitting, especially today, to just note that. If anybody wants to go to the Sacramento School Board Association website, it's in the civility section. And it's a pretty nice write-up for Chris. So appreciate you doing that for them as well. Alright, so now we'll move into reports. And that will be Ms. April Olmer and Jessica Elliott.
Alright, Ms. April cannot be here, but she stands for best. Alright, good evening, Chairman Childers and board members. Tonight, I'm excited to present some early childhood initiatives within York School District One. As always, we make sure that the YSD One vision and mission is centered around all of our initiatives. We also make sure that our commitments, that our YSD One commitments are being embraced in all that we do. I'm sorry. Alright. To better explain parenting partnerships and how we support students and families in early childhood, I'm gonna click on this link that will take you to our What Works SC finalist commercial that gives you an overview of what we offer.
Well, the vision in York School District One is to learn, serve, and give as one. And the Parenting Partnership Center is the hallmark of that vision. Here, we learn with our parents and our parent educators who serve children ages birth to five. We also serve families for children beyond five, just helping parents raise their children.
Well, Parenting Partnership and Family Resource Center in York School District One is unique in the fact that we have a large landmass. We have 314 square miles of families that we cover. And out of that, 72% of those families are in poverty. And so we know that what we have are families that don't have the same resources as everybody else.
As an educator, we always want children to be ready. We know that readiness doesn't start in kindergarten.
Parenting Partnerships is our way that we can walk with families through child development. So we focus on families prenatally through five, and we just focus on the child's needs developmentally. But you cannot do that just by focusing on the child at age. It's a holistic approach. And so you have to engage the family as a whole.
We came in as just a happenstance. I was involved in different programs in York County, and then that program kind of got dissolved. And then I headed over to Parenting Partnerships. My oldest now is a thriving four-and-a-half-year-old. She's had many challenges, and they have been able to help me with those challenges. The amount of support that you get from not only your parent educator, but from the other parent educators and the moms have been awesome. You find out that you're not the only mom who's up at 3:00 in the morning with your newborn because they're not sleeping. Or you're not the only mom that has a kid who's not walking, talking like they should on their milestones. Because most likely, you're gonna find another parent that's going through the exact same thing that you're doing, and the support that they give you is amazing.
Then our Family Resource Center side is we try to engage parents beyond that zero-to-five range. And so we are partners, and we have in our building our adult ed program. And our adult ed program serves parents 17 and up if they need a GED or if they need kind of a gateway into college or just some extra support. And under our try district to go ed area is our new ESL class. A lot of our families requested that they needed more support with English because they wanted to make sure that they were fully engaged. And so that program has thrived.
When we talk about learning and serving as one, I think about our partnership that we have with Affinity Health Clinic.
We are a community health center, and we provide primary care for uninsured, underinsured, low-income families of all ages. And we also have discounted pharmacy, mental health services, substance use treatment services, and a dental clinic.
We've served in the last two years formally 97 families in our community whose lives we've touched by providing support for them as they work with their children. So we know that when we're able to do that kind of service to parents well before their children enter kindergarten, that we're making our community a better place. And we're living up to our belief that helping children be up to our belief that helping children be ready for whatever comes next, whether it be the next milestone, the next grade level, the next subject they're going to learn, is a part of what we do here in York.
All right. And then just to expand on the rest of what that is, we do, in York Parenting Partnerships, we have three parent educators that walk with families through child development and serve our York School District One families as a whole to best prepare the children for school before they're five. One out of one of our parent educators focuses on our Spanish-speaking population, and we host events and group connections that are based on development-centered parenting, parent-child interaction, and family well-being. We call those connectin' plays in Cougar Cub Centers. And also our website that has all the information, all of our newsletters, referral information, and all of our dates. Because these are our faces and our hearts of Parenting Partnerships, Ms. Purley is our data clerk and receptionist. Ms. Sylvia is our OG lady. She's the first parent educator for York, and she's still going strong. Ms. Olga is our Spanish-speaking parent educator, and new to the team is Ms. Maida. And these parent educators, their job, it sounds great, but they do a lot of, they have a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that they do as well. They recruit and work with families, of course, prenatal to five. They have to be certified and use the Parents' Teachers' National Curriculum, and they conduct a minimum of two visits per month with each family. They average 15 to 18 families each per program year. They are responsible for following all the Parents' Teachers' data guidelines as well as First Steps data guidelines. They also conduct multiple development-centered assessments for the children and family well-being assessments for the parents. All data is logged into our data system and used to track growth and support so that we can put our hands on what all we have done. And the parent educators are responsible for those personalized visits that often require them to travel to meet the families in their homes or in a safe location, or they can bring them to the office where we have little rooms set up as well. Currently, we are serving 34 families, one-to-one, with a parent educator, and we have eight families that attend group connections regularly but are not working one-to-one for various reasons. We just hired our newer parent educator, so of course we are still enrolling new families. So if you know any families, send them our way. The next one is how we walk with families. I know sometimes I say a lot of words, more than I should sometimes, but I want to explain what those are. The way we walk with families are through, we've had connected and ready parent events where we've hosted parent-focused lessons for our Title I schools. We've had our Parenting Partnerships Roundup Event at the beginning of the year where we invited local community organizations and families, children under five, to engage with those community organizations and sign up for our new program year. We presented Boohoo Yahoo Breakfast for 4K and 5K parents at each of the Title I schools this year, where each family learned about the importance of school, reading, and separation anxiety. We regularly host Cougar Cub Centers on various Fridays where caregivers and young children come and play and focus on developmental learning. We use our community partners and locations to host connectin' plays each month where we go to various venues and create active learning environments for caregivers and their children. We've had events at York Fire Department, York Library, Bush and Vine, York Rec, and have even more planned for 2024. We also use grant support to offer hands-on, mind-zone learning kits that have materials and guidance for families to engage them in play-based learning and literacy at home or on the go, which a lot of families are always on the go. Our next slide, just because I have to brag on my team. What we say and what we do is in the numbers. So last year, the year before, in 2021, we were all in the 90% or above, and this past program year, '22, '23, we were 100% across the board in our annual program report, meaning that we had hit all guidelines and we had made sure that all of our families were given all, that they needed visits and everything. So we hit that at 100%. We expect the same results. No pressure. All right. And then I'm going to leave my Parenting Partnership hat over here, and we're going to talk about a collaboration effort with Harold C. Johnson, 3K and 4K. So beyond Parenting Partnerships, I've collaborated with Harold C.'s teachers in their PLCs, which is professional learning communities. And we focused that because a lot of our families that we work with directly end up going to Harold C., or they have siblings at Harold C. So we thought that would be a great way to interact. When our... So of course, when you're in a PLC, you always look at your data. So we looked at our gold data, their gold data, for the last year and this year. And so when we took our data dive, we noticed a huge difference in expressive language. So not only were the, did we see it in the data, the teachers were seeing it in the classroom. The kids were not coming in as talkative as they were before. They couldn't express when they needed to use the restroom or if something was wrong. And their level of sentence structure was lower than they had ever noticed before. And so what they were seeing was what we saw in our data as well. That expressive language had made a complete switch from one year to the next. So in fall of 2022, we only had 29% that scored below grade level and 71% on. The following school year, the 4K students came in, 82% were below and 18% were on. So we started looking and digging and thinking and researching. And so we figured out that these children that came into 4K this year were born in 2018 and '19. So that opened that key window of opportunity where their brain was developing was when we were locked down for COVID. So they were a little over getting ready to be a year old. So all that key window of development, we had high stress, we weren't going anywhere, parents were at home, they were stressed out a little bit. And so there was less, possibly less opportunities for talking than there had been before. Technology is also our lives now, and so there is less expressive interaction with our technology now. So when children are getting it younger, they can hear people talking, but they're not interacting with it. So they're not asking them questions and having them reply. So they're not used to being asked direct questions. And then now in our technological age, visits to the grocery store aren't as common because now we have grocery pickup, which I'm not complaining about. But there are so many learning opportunities from pushing your child in the buggy and them seeing all those things and talking about it and understanding it. There's less visits to the playgrounds and the museums, and there's, you know, all of that is in things. And think about restaurants. Now we have DoorDash or Grubhub or whatever, and so there's less opportunities for children to be at a restaurant and engaging in that conversation. And just overall, less direct questioning and language interaction. So what can we do about it? So we can increase parent and community awareness. We can provide more opportunities to play using expressive language, and then more experiences and less technology from birth to six. And the only reason I say that is technology is a tool, but you have to have that foundation before you can use technology as a tool. So we're asking parents to play more and use hands-on interaction and save technology until they're six or above. All right? This is our action plan. So when we saw a problem, we collaborated together to develop a way that we could, you know, overcome this issue. And this is our action plan that we developed to overcome the expressive language decline. Our PLC team is comprised of Jennifer Capps, Kim Mitchell, Paige Riley, and Clay Bryant and I. We meet weekly to discuss growth and ideas. All teachers are reporting that they are hearing and seeing growth due to intentionality of creating an active environment that promotes play, that is developmental and appropriate for 4K students. The teachers have also done an excellent job of working alongside parents and caregivers since we know that they are their child's first teacher. Early childhood and our 4K action plan truly encompasses our connected-as-one motto through a holistic approach to engage the family, school, and community to address the expressive language gap. And then, can't have data without cute pictures. So this shows some truly awesome field trip that was planned by 3K and 4K teachers, and it was just a ride around town. They didn't even have to get off the bus or, you know, everybody go to the bathroom because you know how that is. So they ride around town, and they were looking at the different buildings, and they had, you know, specialized buildings, and they had this cute little booklet because they were coming, upcoming unit. And the parents were all invited to attend, and you can see, we had a ton of parents, which was beautiful. We about didn't make it on the bus, we had so many, which is an awesome problem to have. And then they used the book and looked at shapes of the things and, you know, got to ride around town, and we learned that even the parents didn't know a lot about the buildings that we were talking about, so it was like a tour bus. So it was great. And then we helped guide that expressive language and engage the families. But they all had a great time talking, engaging, and learning. And then to keep going with the action plan and better inform and work directly with 4K parents, they were invited to attend play sessions that I led during the day at the Harold C. Annex. We discussed what expressive language is, why it's important, along with the data comparison from last year to this year with Gold. Then we dove into types of play and questioning and why both are so important at this age. Parents were then led through centers, and their children were brought down from the classroom so that they could actively put their new learning to use and show them that they are their child's first and most important teacher, and that teaching continues even when they are in school. You can, well, you're going to see from the videos that the parents are working hard to question and expand language. We've only had four parents to attend, but that's okay. One parent is active in our Parenting Partnerships program, and so she brought her almost one-year-old son to all the sessions. And video three highlights how she has used this information to engage the one-year-old. So that's what we want. We want it to keep going. And this shows why parent education and development is so empowering. And then we have plans to offer more sessions for this upcoming program year. We're going to play that parent one just so I can, you can hear how she is purposely questioning him and engaging him in conversation. That was just a little blurb. But they were, they would question in the, while in play to engage in that and use them in different props and everything. And then there's some other videos of different children doing the same thing, and then she used questioning for the cute little fella in the other beanbag. So is our action plan working? Well, yes, it is. The teachers conducted a mid-year evaluation for Gold at the end of December so that we can track overall and individual progress of learners, and I'm happy to report that 29% were below and 71 are now on grade level after two and a half months of creating this action plan. We cannot wait to report the end of the year growth because we know we are headed in the right direction by engaging parents and students in expressive language expansion through play. And the teachers have been working hard to make sure that they are intentionally playing and using that engagement in the classroom. So we're excited about that one. And I'm still not done. I'm sorry. These are some more collaborative efforts that we have across the board. With First Five SC, it is a one-stop responsive online portal for parents and caregivers to learn about public programs and services that help with their child's growth and development for the state. So if a parent goes to that and they put their information in, then, because we are a part of that, we are being supported by that. There's 10 agencies, 60 programs. We are now a part of that. And our 4K enrollment form and our Parenting Partnerships and Family Resource Center referral form is now going to be uploaded into that. So if they populate, put their information in, we'll automatically pull up and say, hey, come see us, and we'll have all their information there. So this is a great effort that we are included in. We also are working with York County First Steps as a selected grant recipient partner for the Countdown to Kindergarten Innovation Grant, and we are, they're focusing on York and Clover, and so they're going to modify the Countdown to Kindergarten model, which was just home visits in the house for five to six weeks during summer break. Well, now that we've kind of adjusted that, we've gone back to the drawing table, and now we have the ability to be innovative for the teachers. So our district and York County First Steps will be working together to create a Countdown to Kindergarten planning group and work with details to engage 4K and 5K teachers and assistants to participate in leading this effort, and the grant will allow us to pilot innovative teaching strategies and hopefully get these children in earlier and engaged. All right, we're finally done. Do you have any questions or comments, concerns?
Any questions or comments? Well, I'll just say, numbers going in the right direction are definitely positive for us, for all of us. I do want to go back to the, well, the Riley Institute, just being there was, seeing that video for the first time was pretty, I think, special for those that were there. So again, appreciate your efforts and everybody's efforts on that. What's going on at Harold C. Johnson is, obviously if it's working, it's working. So continue that path for all that are working on that. So you might have anything additional? Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, maintenance update from Mr. Charlie Westbrook, Director of Maintenance.
Is it going to have cute pictures too, Charlie?
I'll have any cute moments, guys.
Ask him, what about the graphs, then?
Good evening, board. Good evening, Ms. Cox. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on maintenance and custodians. I'm going to try to be brief. I just wanted to go through and talk a little bit about, in the beginning, what we do in maintenance and kind of give you some statistics, and then I'm going to go into a little bit more on the individuals in maintenance. This was, we actually moved this presentation a little bit, so you're seeing from June to November on maintenance work orders. We, at that time, we had about 1,000 work orders completed. We keep about 90 or so active work orders open, and 30 of those are like on-hole work orders. So that really only equates down to about 60 that are, you know, active, that are coming in daily. So that's kind of where we stand on average, what we do. So, you know, we stay pretty close to about 2,000 work orders per school year. You know, we don't get a lot of work orders like we do during the regular school year in the summertime, but we do, we do average about 2,000 during the school year. So with 10 guys, that's, that's pretty good, you know, work orders. One thing I do like to always add is we have, we do about 90 to 95% in my opinion of in-house work. We don't do a lot of subbing out work because basically we have guys that can pretty much cover everything. And, you know, unless it's labor or some kind of specialized something that we need, we try to do it all in-house and keep it together. So we save lots of money that way, and it seems to work well for us. I wanted to get into talking about our maintenance staff. Several, several board meetings we had a while back. Several, several board meetings we had a while back. Chuck Wallace had a really great idea, I thought. He kind of highlighted the technology department. And he talked about his staff. And, you know, a lot of times, maintenance guys get in the, in the, in the background and they're on the roof and, you know, behind the building and things like that. So, you don't see them a lot, but they're, they're there and they, you know, are working. So, I wanted to kind of go through really quick. I wanted to go through and just say a little something about each one of them. To lead off the pack, top center, which is exactly where she should be, is Kim. Kim is our, Kim's our administrative assistant to maintenance and custodian. She also backs up finance, special projects, and she does a lot of receptionist work at the front, too. So, as you know, Kim keeps us all straight. Next one, middle left, is Andrew Barton. Andrew Barton's our main HVAC guy. He's been with the district for 13 years. He works with our building automation stuff, our building automation systems. He's a technician for that. A great fabrication mechanic. One thing that I wanted to add about Andrew Barton is we've got a bus project going on right now that we're doing for Jessica, actually. So, we're building a school bus that they can travel out into the neighborhoods and things like that. Andrew's kind of took a lot of that on himself. Andrew's a great fabricator. He can, he's putting a generator and air conditioners in that bus right now to get it ready for us to move it on forward to the Ford D. Johnson students and let them help us out on it. So, number two is Justin Carson. Justin's at the bottom right there. Justin's our newest maintenance employee. He's been with us about two years. Came from York County. He was with the Water and Sewer Department there. So, he fit right in with our plumbing. So, that's kind of, Justin's kind of our main plumber. He, he does, he's, he actually, when he came to work here, we sent him to school to be backflow certified. So, he does all our backflow certifications and things like that, which is a big thing. It's a, it's a state, you know, and city required thing that we have to do. Also put on there, all the assembled equipment. We always have a lot of stuff needs moving and putting together, and Justin's really good at that. Next one's a biggie, Mr. Larry Earl. He's been with the school district for 44 years. Anybody that don't know Larry, he does not come to York School District. Larry's our electrician. I put on there, he's very knowledgeable of all maintenance jobs in the district. I don't mean that to be smart, but what I meant by that is Larry's the guy that everybody calls to want to know what's going on, where something's located, where a wire is, where something's in the ground. Larry is, he's very knowledgeable and has a mind that's unbelievable. He can remember, he can remember where they buried a pipe 40 years ago. So, Larry's planning on retiring, hopefully. He's talking about, you know, moving on and retiring. So, hopefully, he'll be able to do that at the end of this school year. And that's going to be a huge spot to fill. That being said, Mr. Jim Farley, who is our next one, Jim's been with us for five years. Jim came actually from Fort Mill School District, came to work for us. He, Jim is going to move into Larry's spot in the electrical department. Jim's already doing lots of electrical work. Great guy. He can do it all. Jim's, Jim's really, really good. Zan Good is our next one. Zan's been with us about eight years. Zan's our carpenter. He does any kind of carpenter work, anything like that we need licensed. He's a licensed contractor. I put on a heavy lifter. Zan is one that if, if we need something really heavy moved, we put two guys on one end and Zan on the other. James Graham, James Graham's another long, longtime employee. 41 years for James. James is our locksmith. He takes care of door, window problems, roofs. As we all know, the challenges we have at YMS, he's the, he's the YMS guru. He goes over and James knows every part of that school from top to bottom. So, we really appreciate, you know, what he does for us there. Mike Hams, Mike Hams is our outdoor guy. He, Mike's been with us 22 years. He's our grounds, equipment operator. If you see anybody riding anything mechanical around, it's usually Mike. Always put Wildlife Control on there. He's our, he's our animal catcher. Everything from snakes to birds, bats, any kind of thing that moves or wiggles, he can grab it. So, another one we have is Tim Lover. Tim Lover's been with us 16 years. Tim's another one that plans to retire at the end of this school year. So, we're going to have some big holes to fill after this year. Tim works on all our food service equipment. He's a great technician. Tim actually worked for Carolins for many years before he came to the school district. And he's, he's excellent on kitchen equipment, which is a, you know, it's going to be, it's going to be tough to replace him. That'll be a needle in a haystack to find somebody that can do what Tim does. And last but not least, is Mr. Wade Tumble. Wade's been with us for 30 years. And I'd like to say a few things about Wade. Wade stepped into our garage position, which works on our buses, all of our mobile equipment, about two years ago. Wade, Wade was kind of a do-all guy. He did a little bit of everything, a lot of painting and a lot of, you know, just general maintenance type stuff. But two years ago, we were in need of a mechanic. Wade come to me and said, I'd like to take on the mechanic job. And so, Wade, I'm going to be honest with you, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff that goes with that mechanic job as far as, you know, being certified. You know, there's a lot of responsibility to haul kids around in a bus. And, you know, especially a bus that we work on ourselves. So, Wade took on that position. He's, he's done outstanding. Wade has fell in there and got all of his certifications. He does all of our bus inspections, which again, saves us quite a bit of money than it does. We were, we were at a point where we shipped out buses to have them inspected on annual inspections at one time. And Wade's picked all that back up. And I'll tell you something about Wade that was pretty neat. Kevin Queen, our transportation director, sent me a text the other day and said how much he really appreciated Wade. Said Wade, Wade actually had a bus going out very early one morning. And it's been so cold and nasty that Wade pulled the bus under the shed, because it was a female driver and he didn't want her to have to try to scrape windows and that sort of thing. So, that's the kind of work we get from, from folks, you know, in our, our maintenance crowd. They're, they're trying to take care of people and trying to do things to help everybody as much as possible. I'll go to our custodians and say a brief few words about them. And I'd like to be able to talk about some of those and maybe spotlight some of those in the future. But I know we don't have a lot of time to go through 65 tonight. But we have 65 custodians in the school district. About 1,295,000 square feet is about normal. It's about the average of what we have on, on the district for all our buildings. That average is out to about 20,000 to 25,000 square feet per custodian. So, if you can imagine, the way I look at it, you know, our houses are, you know, 2,000, 4,000 square feet, somewhere in that neighborhood, they're cleaning 20,000 to 25,000 a day. That's what they're doing. So, that's, that's, that kind of gives you a perspective of what they're, the area that they're cleaning. Our custodial supervisor is Mickey Tullaro. Mickey is a great asset to the district. Mickey, Mickey runs a lot really hard. He chases a lot of things down and does a lot of stuff with them. I'd like to also mention, we have two lead custodians. Robert Palmer is at the high school. Everybody pretty much knows Robert, goes in and out of the high school. Bill Dixon's at the middle school. They're great. They do lots of work, help us a lot. And we also have two part-time custodial floaters. I wanted to mention those. That was something that Ms. Hagner was able to work out a year or two ago. And basically, we brought a couple of floaters in-house. All of our custodians, I mean, all of our custodial work is 100% in district. You know, we do it all here in-house. And we were able to get a couple of floaters. So, they move. They're, they're four-hour-a-day folks that move all over the district. You never know where you're going to see them. It's wherever Mickey puts them every day is where they, they end up. So, they're a huge asset to us. As always, thank you custodians, because they really do a good job. You can go to pretty much any district around. And anybody that's been to York generally tells me how good our schools look and how clean they are. And it's all because of our custodians. So, I appreciate your time. And if anybody has any questions, maintenance or custodian related, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions or comments for who?
I do have a comment. For the size of the staff, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
It makes you proud to walk in the school as old as ours are and to see them look the way they look.
That's right.
A very good job.
Appreciate it.
I think we all agree to that.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one comment. You do a wonderful job. Over the years, some of our areas outside have gotten neglected. And y'all have done a great job of trying to get the grounds under control. So, we appreciate that very much.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Westbrook.
Appreciate it.
No move to officer of instruction?
Thank you. And I'm Mimic. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. And thank you for all you do and your support. And good evening. I have one action item for you this evening, which is the annual approval of our school renewal plans. These were originally due to the state in early January. However, the deadline for these to be submitted has been adjusted to tomorrow due to the inclement weather that many of us in the state experienced during early January. So, the plans are included in your packet. And I believe that they have also been included or communicated in your weekly brief, word brief, as a recurring item for a while now. So, at this time, we respectfully request your approval of our school renewal plans.
Is there a motion for approval?
I submit for the approval of the 2024 school renewal plan approval.
I have a motion by Ms. Johnson for the 2024 school renewal plan approval. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Rebels. Is there any discussion? All is a favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Motion carries.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Would not continue to, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations is Ms. Hagner.
Good evening, Board members. I would like to also echo what everyone else has said. Happy School Board Appreciation Month. And I truly appreciate what you do for our district and our community. Thank you so much. So, I have just a few items to cover with you all tonight. It is budget season. It's getting ready to bust wide open right now. So, the first item is our 24-25 budget timeline. Things look a little different this year, just a little bit. A few minutes, you're going to approve our new procurement code that we have to follow under. And because of that, we had to adjust our timeline. So, we had to hear our capital requests at an earlier date. The reason for that is because now that we will follow under the new procurement rules, if there are items that will have to be procured, we'll have to bid that out. And it is a process. It could take several months. And for those projects that need to take place over the summer, we want to make sure we have, allow enough time for that. So, we'll share those requests with you at a future work session. We'll also have our budget work sessions held each month. You can see in March is when we'll hear our personnel requests, any new personnel requests from our schools and our departments. The other item I would like to highlight is on May the 2nd, we'll have a stakeholder input on our budget at 5:00 PM. That'll be held here. And then, as always, we'll have first reading of the budget at the end of May. We'll have our public hearing at the June board, prior to the June board meeting, and our second and final reading of the budget at the June board meeting. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that timeline if you have any. Next, I want to give you a brief update. Our legislators have been in session for two weeks. And there's a lot going on on the education side already. If any of you have looked at the governor's budget, you can see the governor has proposed some major changes. First, to the minimum teacher salary schedule. I'll back up first at the State Department level. Superintendent Weaver proposed a $1,500 increase to the state minimum salary schedule. As a reminder, the state minimum is currently 42,500. Remember, we pay above that. We're at 45,180. So, in her budget, she proposed 1,500 on the 42.5. As the governor's budget came out, he proposed a $2,500 increase to that. In addition to that, two major changes to the minimum teacher salary schedule. One is the governor has proposed a brand-new salary schedule. The goal for the governor and folks from his office, it is to simplify, give districts flexibility and to simplify our salary schedule that's been around for many years. So, what he, what, now, I'll have, I'll share the schedule with you. I did not include this in here. We didn't have it at the time, but I'll include that in your Friday file this week. But what he's doing, if you look at our current salary schedule, we have five education levels. You've got your bachelor's, your bachelor's plus 18. You have a master's, a master's plus 30, and your doctorate degree. In the new schedule, there are two levels. You have your bachelor, which includes your bachelor's plus your 18. And you have what they call now a graduate. And that includes your master's and your master's plus 30. It basically does away with the doctorate degree. It also takes the current state scale that has 23 years and it extends that to 30 years. But it's going to look a little different, because it's going to have bands. So, like, the first band is years of experience from zero to two would make 45,000. And then, it goes from three to five, six to eight. So, totally different way of looking at the salary schedule. It's very, very, very early in the budget process. Subcommittee's are meeting on this now. House will debate the budget March 11th through the 14th. So, we'll kind of get a better understanding of what this scale may mean to us, what may be required of school districts. I was in Columbia today at a finance rental table. And obviously, this was the topic of conversation, because this is a, could potentially be a major overhaul of the salary schedule as we know it. So, I will keep you posted as we move through the legislative process. Any questions regarding budget? Still early, lot, lot to happen, but I'll keep you posted as we get information from Columbia.
We just hope it's going to be a little simpler than the last one.
I hope so.
Chairman Childrens, may I make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Hagner, perhaps it would be good to elaborate on the presenter indicating that there's been very little feedback.
So, we did have someone from the governor's office speak to us. As you know, we had a ton of questions on this from, from all the CFOs in the state. One of the comments that she made today was, we're not hearing from people. Because it's very confusing. If you look at the schedule, it's really unclear how teachers may benefit from this. And they see that teachers will benefit. Her comment to us was, was we've only heard from seven, seven teachers in the state. So, I just don't think people know about this right now.
Isn't it typically premature for somebody to comment because it hasn't gotten far enough yet? I mean, wouldn't that be terrible?
Yes, but according to, according to-
I mean, you can look at it both ways, right?
According to her, she feels like, because this is an election year, these were her words, because it is election year, she feels like this is going to go pretty far. And their point is, it is more flexible and a simplified method. And they're seeing it as a way to recruit teachers on the front end. That's what their focus is. His, the governor's focus is to, by 2026, to get that starting teacher salary, the minimum, starting salary up to 50,000.
And Ms. Hagner, to be clear, we're unsure of what would happen with districts that are already exceeding that minimum. And preliminary looks means if this were to go through, for some of our teachers on the upper end of the scale, it, it could have a very negative effect.
That's right.
No increase whatsoever?
A decrease.
That's what I said, no increase.
There would have to be a whole harmless provision written into, written into the budget for that. We had, we had a ton of questions. A lot of them, she couldn't answer today. But we, we're going to have a working group that's going to try to get together after the House deliberates the budget, so late March, early April. Because if we've got to implement a new salary schedule, like I said, it's going to be a major overhaul that we'll have to implement in our finance system. And I mean, this is a completely different look to what the salary schedule, what, what we know now.
Did you get the feel that some benefit teachers?
There are, her points were that it was a simplified scale. And they're really looking to attract new teachers to the system. And she felt, she- And she felt, she, they're modeling this after several other states, and this is how other states have been able to attract new teachers. Stay tuned for this one. Okay, any more questions on budgets? Okay. Um, the next is procurement code. Before I go and, uh, ask for approval, I do want to take a moment to, um, in, introduce David Baker. He is our new procurement manager, and I wanted to say kudos to this man right here. He loves procurement, and thank goodness he loves procurement. He makes my life really easy. Um, and he has come in and just, he has like jumped right into this code, dissecting the code. He's done a wonderful job training our staff, getting our staff prepared. He's got manuals written. So I just want to make sure I formally thank him because he's done a tremendous job. And as I've had conversations with you all in the past about procurement code, once a district hits seventy-five million dollars in expenditures, you have to adopt the state procurement code. And so what is before you tonight is what the state has presented to us. Um, they have approved it from their side, and so tonight I ask for your approval of this code.
Is there a motion for approval as recommended by administration for model procurement code and exemptions as presented?
So we need to accept the recommendation from staff and the procurement team.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Rebels as recommended by administration, have a second by Ms. Johnson. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Hager.
David really appreciates it. Okay, next item is our ESSR update. Um, normally, we present this to you at your work sessions, and so I think we had a, we did meet in December, so it's gonna be a little, a little delayed because what you'll see tonight is a report from our quarter one, our July, August, and September expenditures. So just as a reminder, um, you know, we had three rounds of ESSR funds. We had almost twenty million dollars, um, with all three rounds of ESSR funding. ESSR two, you can see the total was almost five point two million. That expired just recently in September. And then we have ESSR three, which was our largest pot, um, got almost eleven point six million dollars, and that is coming up on us quickly. It expires in September of twenty-four. As far as reporting goes, um, we have, as a district, we have to submit our claims quarterly. At the close of the quarter, um, we have forty-five days to get those claims into the State Department. One of the things that they do a phenomenal job with is keeping up with all of our documentation. Uh, we know we're gonna get audited. It is a matter of when. Um, we have, we know districts around us and districts in our county have. We have not yet, but it will come, just due to the large sum of money that we have received. And then, um, the other thing I want to say, I want to give a shout out to Lisa and Sheri. They're my ESSR gurus over here, and they have done a phenomenal job of monitoring and keeping up with all this money. And when I say that you have to dot your i's and cross your t's with, you have to do it with all funds, but this fu, these, you know, this pot of funding in particular. So it's just a lot of detailed work, a lot of reporting, and a lot of time goes into, um, making sure these funds are spent. So I want to thank them very much for what they've done. So if you look at ESSR two, like I said, in total, we got about five point two million. You can see in fiscal year twenty-one, we spent a little over six hundred and twenty thousand. Fiscal year twenty-two, we're at three million. Fiscal year twenty-three, almost one point four. And obviously, in quarter one, because that's when the funds expired, we spent all money. So I am so excited to say, we did not, we spent all of our ESSR one funds. We did not spend, send one penny back to the State Department. And our ESSR two funds, we did not send any money back. One of the updates at our state meeting today was, um, in ESSR two funds of the state, ninety-nine point nine three percent of the funds were spent that were allocated to the state of South Carolina. That's pretty darn good. Shows that, that districts needed it and that they're spending it. Um, ESSR three right now, I think it was about, um, I think it was about seventy percent, but we still have through September to get those spent. And if we look at ESSR three, like I said, it was our lar, largest pot, eleven point six million. In FY twenty-two, we spent two point seven. In FY twenty-three, we spent two point two. And in quarter one, we spent a little over four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. So you can see, we've got over six million to spend from October to next September. And I assure you, these two ladies will make sure that we will spend every dime, and we will not send any money back to the State Department. And so that is our ESSR update, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
One question. Do you anticipate any problems with the new procurement codes and spending this money? Because if that was even in place, would we?
No, we do not. That's some of the conversations we've had either with, not just ESSR funds, but all of our federal funds, um, that we know ahead of time of how we're gonna spend those, and if we have to go through that process, we've got plenty of time to make sure. But we're, we're good on our ESSR. Any other questions with ESSR? Okay. Last, our Ag Arena. I'm so excited to give you all an update on our Ag Arena. Um, we are making progress towards this. So just as a reminder, we have created our steering committee. We meet monthly. Uh, wanna just kind of recap the funding that has been secured. We received a half a million dollars through the Department of Ag two years ago. Uh, this past year, we received seven hundred and fifty thousand through the Sacramento Department of Education. So we've got one point two five million dollars that has been secured for this project. Our two foundations, as you know, we're partnered with Clover, so the York School District One Education Foundation and the Clover League Foundation. Um, they've got groups together, um, starting to work on fundraisers, so I would hope in the next few months, five, six months, you should start hearing a lot of information around those fundraisers and can participate in that. The district, we have partnered with Lightner Management Group. They're gonna help facilitate this process. He, um, Jim Britton, who we worked with before, um, he's been very instrumental already in this process, and he's gonna play a key role in seeing this project to completion. In December of twenty-three, we put out an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for architectural and engineering services. Thank you, David. Um, he, he and Jim were able to get that out quickly right before Christmas break. Uh, we did have three firms submit proposals for that. We created a subcommittee. We had evaluation criteria. Uh, we each evaluated all three firms individually and talked about those and ranked those. Uh, this Thursday, we have interviews with two of the top finalists. Our plan is after we have the two interviews, make a selection and enter into a contract with that firm as soon as we can, um, preferably by February the first. Like I said, we do have a, a pretty tight timeline. Uh, March is Ag month, and we're hoping to unveil a lot of great things in March. Um, we are, our committee, marketing committee, is working on a logo and a name of the arena. We hope to unveil that at the, at March twenty-fifth event. We hope, we're gonna invite our architect that we onboard to this event, and we're going to hopefully have a conceptual drawing of the Ag Arena. We also have been working very good. Uh, our MOU committee has created their memorandum of agreement for our three partners, um, York School District, Clover School District, and Core Age. So we're making a lot of progress. Uh, a lot of exciting things to come. Looking forward to getting this firm onboard, um, to really start spending some time at the property, working on the design, and, um, just like I said, just so many exciting things to come with the Ag Arena. So stay tuned for that. And that is the update on that, and I'm happy to answer, um, any questions you have.
Any questions? Thank you.
Awesome.
Thank you, Ms. Hager. I know there's a lot more information to talk about. We'll have next, Office of Human Resources, Ms. Jennifer Bowlen.
Good evening again. I have a couple information items and then a couple action items. First info, information item is on letters of intent. We sent those out before our winter break. Um, they went out on December fourth, and we had them returned before everyone left for winter break. We did get ninety-six percent returned, which is wonderful. Um, the ones that didn't return, a lot of them were out on medical leave. So that was why we didn't get those back. Um, we have about four percent that were undecided. Um, but two percent that were not returning, and one of those is a res, one percent is resignation, and one percent are retirements. And pretty much all of them that were not returning, we already kind of had some information about, and some of them you had already approved at the December meeting too, that were not returning. Um, just, so that's a little bit of that information. Any questions about that? About letters of intent? Okay. Our next information item is a certified retirement, and, um, this is just for your information. This is a working retiree. Our next item is an action item. This is our certified retirements. And these are for our annual, our school year, our academic year, and for the actual, um, physical year too.
So for certified retirements, just a reminder, if there's any need for discussion, we have to go to executive session on these action items. Is there a motion for approval for certified retirements?
I submit that we accept the certified retirement and add congratulations as well as listed.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson as recommended with congratulations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Howell. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carries.
Our next item is certified resignations and release for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four contracts.
We have a motion for certified resignations and release of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four contracts.
So move for the adoption of certified resignation and release of contracts for twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McSwain. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carries.
Our next item is certified resignations for the end of this school year for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
We have a motion for certified resignations for the end of twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Faulkner. Second by Ms. Johnson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carries.
And our next act, and the item is certified recommendations for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Is there a motion for certified recommendations for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year?
Need to accept certified recommendations for twenty-three, twenty-four as recommended by staff.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rebels as recommended by staff. Second by Ms. Johnson. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carries.
And our next item is certified recommendations for next school year, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion for certified recommendations for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year.
So move for the adoption of certified recommendations for twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, and a great job in advance.
Have a motion by Ms. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Faulkner. Any need for discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. We know the work you put into this, so we'd really appreciate it. Now turn it over to, uh, Ms. Kelly Cox, Office of Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Childers, board members. Uh, I only have one item for you tonight, and that's regarding our upcoming dates. But before I get into those, I would like to take this opportunity to publicly thank the Men's Club of York. Uh, Men's Club of York is an organization of gentlemen that was formed in two thousand and nine. The current president is David Cobb. The vice president is Andre Good. It was formed after the tragic death of, uh, Mr. Good's niece that happened in the community, and they strive to get ba, give back to and support the youth of the community. I speak of this group because they held their annual banquet last Saturday night, and at the banquet, they publicly thanked the district for our partnership with them. Um, they host for us the annual coke drive at the beginning of school each year, excuse, yeah, beginning of school each year. Um, the book back drive, I said that backwards, the book bag drive at the beginning of school, and at Christmas, they do the coke drive. Um, those are both events that our community looks forward to each year, and they, um, provide for us. I, I would like to, it's great that Charlie presented tonight, but they did call out Charlie and his team for all of the support that they give them and opening of the facilities and working together. So I just wanted to take this time to thank that organization as well as, uh, Charlie and his team for working collaboratively with them. Appreciate that.
Thank you for that.
Um, our upcoming dates that you have here, um, please note that this Thursday evening, that is this Thursday evening, we will have our strategic change agenda. Remember, that's our five-year plan. We're halfway through the plan, so we're doing a touch point. How are we doing toward meeting our district goals? We'll have that here at the district office. It begins at five thirty, and we would love for some of you to attend if you can. Uh, remember, I can't have more than three of you because then we would have a quorum and have to call a meeting.
That's right.
But if you're interested in coming, please let Ms. Webb know because I think it would be important to have some of you represent. Uh, we have the fish fry coming up. Uh, on February the third, Ms. Bowlen has organized our recruitment fair. That will be held over at the high school, starting at eight thirty in the morning. That's February the third. We're very excited about that. February the twelfth will be that strategic change agenda midpoint check number two. We're doing it in a series of two meetings, so perhaps some of you could come to the first and some of you to the second. Maybe all of you could have an opportunity to participate. We have our, our regular February board meeting, uh, coming up right after that. February fifteenth to eighteen is the annual convention in Hilton Head, and as I understand, Chairman Childers and Beth and Betty, you all will be attending, uh, as well as Ms. Hager and myself. Right after that, we have the intercession, February nineteenth through twenty-three. I won't go too far into the March dates, except to call your attention, March twenty-fifth is on your agenda there. That is at six P M., and that's what Ms. Hager was referencing with the agricultural arena event. Um, we'll give more details as we get closer to it, but if you'll mark your calendars, I think it'd be great if you all could plan to participate. We were discussing perhaps the possibility of a reception prior to the event with our board, Clover's board, and the foundation boards. So we'd love to mark, have you mark your calendars on that?
Just to back up, for the first and second of March, I, we probably need to make sure everybody's got that on their calendars.
Yes, yes, please. Uh, March one and two, we've had it in several communications, but that is our board retreat. There'll be information coming to you out of what we accomplished during our strategic change agenda midpoint check-ins. We really need a more convenient name for that. It's a mouthful. I've included the times. It'll be on Friday night from nine, five P M. to nine P M. We promise we're gonna, gonna keep you to nine, but just in case, we wanted to make sure we reserved that time. And then on Saturday, from nine A M. in the morning to one in the afternoon.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. Does anybody have any questions? Comment from Ms. Cox? Is there a need for executive session?
Uh, I have a statement to make. Please, 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 you're gonna.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to publicly thank the high school and those who were responsible for the winner graduation. Uh, in my opinion, it was a great job done. The graduation was beautiful, and it was the very first time that I've ever seen an audience participate as they did. Personally, I was proud to be a part of the Cougar Team. It, it, it made me so proud that I went home talking about the pennies. Um, it's, it's, it gives me much gratitude to say thank you to all of you for the work that you do. And I want to say thank you for acknowledging us tonight as well. Cotton Belt, I'll see you Monday morning. But thanks for all that you do in the district because it takes us working together to make things happen, and that. to make things happen and that was proven, uh, Dr. Thorpe and, and your team, that was proven on last week. It was a great graduation and whoever was responsible, I can't say all of the names, I can't begin to call you, but it was great. Absolutely great. So, I, I don't want to leave here tonight without you hearing that from me on behalf of the board. Can I talk for y'all?
Yes, ma'am. I, I think, I think we would all, I think we would all agree to that. So, thank you, Ms. Johnson. We greatly appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Is there a need for executive session?
I don't have a need.
All right. Have a motion adjourned, Mr. Rebels?
Second.
Have a second by Ms. Faulkner. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Motion carried.